All right, so no modifications to the agenda. We have item 3A, conversion therapy practices. Who from administration will speak? Ms. Winter.
Is there feedback?
Uh, seems to be okay.
Council passed a motion at the July 14th, 2020, regular council meeting directing administration to bring back a report on conversion therapy practices. The direction was to include the current state of licensing in Beaumont. What other municipalities are doing to prohibit conversion therapy practices? How the federal government bill C8, the Act to amend the Criminal Code, code conversion therapy, relate to what other municipalities are doing? And what options are available to prohibit the practice of conversion therapy in Beaumont? Business licensing in Beaumont pertains to the licensing and regulations of businesses located within the city limits of Beaumont. Currently, administration is not aware of any businesses offering or advertising conversion therapy in Beaumont. Currently, bylaw 831-14 business license bylaw does not have a section that prohibits businesses within Beaumont. With regards to other municipalities, there have been nine other Alberta municipalities that have passed some form of restriction when it comes to conversion therapy. I have outlined in the report each municipality's structure for banning the conversion therapy. Some of the methods other municipalities have used are prohibiting the business practice, advertising or offering conversion therapy services with fines, governance policies, restrictions with minors, and business license bylaws to regulate. With regards to Canada-wide, in my report, I have included information other Canadian cities, citizens, cities and provinces that have banned the practice of conversion therapy. Other Canadian municipalities appear to be choosing a draft standalone conversion therapy prohibition or business prohibition bylaws. With regards to Bill C8, it was introduced in the House of Commons on March 9th, 2020. Bill C8 proposes five new criminal code offenses related to conversion therapy, as I've outlined in my report. Bill C8 also amends the Criminal Code to authorize courts to order the advertisements for conversion therapy to be disposed or deleted. To date, Bill C8 has only been given introduction to first reading in the House of Commons. Bill S260 is an act to amend the Criminal Code. Conversion therapy was introduced in the Senate on April 9th, 2019. The bill proposes to amend the Criminal Code to make it an offense to advertise conversion therapy services for consideration obtained financial or other material benefit for the provision of conversion therapy to a person under the age of 18. To date, there have been no further movement on Bill 260. With no federal law in place to ban conversion therapy across Canada, some provinces and municipalities have taken steps to outlaw the practice within their jurisdictions. The Alberta provincial government currently has no legislation or formal policy prohibiting conversion therapy. Conversion therapy is not a recognized health service in Alberta and cannot be provided by any regulated health professional in Alberta. The Health Professional professions act exempts psychologists and psychiatric nurse requirement to have a municipal business license. There have been a number of legal challenges when it comes to municipal bylaws that overlap into federal jurisdiction. I've noted a number of those considerations for the committee to consider. I have included seven potential options for the committee to review, and I welcome any questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's a really comprehensive report. Appreciate all the research and effort that went into compiling it. Open it up to members of council for comment. Counselor Margot Swain, you were the original mover of the motion. Would you like to have a whack at this?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. Well, committee chair, I guess, today. So first I'll say, I guess, bear with me, obviously, this is quite an important topic for me, so I've got quite a few things to say here. So I'll, I'll make my way through that. First, I want to thank council for approving the notice of motion to get us here tonight. And to thank administration for all the hard work to prepare this information, a lot of work obviously going into it. And I also wanted to recognize the strong support from the community when looking into banning conversion therapy, as when it was first discussed in council. After we passed the notice of motion, not only did I receive strong feedback personally from, from many individuals across the city, but you know, the Beaumont social media feeds were incredibly positive with hundreds of likes and really no negative comments, which, to be honest, in this day and age is pretty rare. So, you know, I just wanted to acknowledge that. However, that was the first step, and we still have a few key decisions in front of us, which I'd like to speak to tonight. Up front, I want to share that the research is very clear. Conversion therapy is happening in Canada. There is no benefit to the practice of conversion therapy. There is only harm. I think we can all agree that the practice of conversion therapy is abhorrent and has no place in our society. So I'm not going to be spending any time tonight talking about what it is, more focused on what we should be doing to ensure that it has no place in Beaumont. So tonight, I'm going to be seeking support from council for two things. One, to have administration bring back a standalone conversion therapy prohibition bylaw and a council policy on opposition of conversion therapy. I'll share some thoughts first, and then I'll pause and give other folks a chance to weigh in before putting any, any motions on the floor. So there are three questions that I'd like to address tonight before putting forward my recommendations. One, the notion that it isn't happening here, so why do we need a bylaw? Two, it's, isn't this the federal government's jurisdiction? And three, what about legal challenges and legal concerns? So number one, the report, the report states that, quote, "City administration is not aware of any business offering or advertising conversion therapy as a service or business activity within Beaumont." So while that may be factually accurate, respectfully, it's actually irrelevant. If you agree if something is abhorrent or unsafe in the community, we shouldn't wait for that to become a reality before we act. Option one states, since there are no substantiated conversion therapy practices in Beaumont, any action to prohibit conversion therapy may be deemed unnecessary. So again, respectfully, I couldn't disagree more. This is not the type of business or practice that is going to advertise or take out retail space between Mainers and Chertier. Research shows that this practice is typically underground, so a comprehensive standalone bylaw makes it clear that conversion therapy is not an acceptable practice in Beaumont. The second question, why is Beaumont getting involved in this? Is this not under the federal government's jurisdiction? First, let me highlight a key word on the top of the report, sorry, on the top of page two in the report, where it says, "The federal government is, quote, 'considering amendments to the Criminal Code to ban the practice of conversion therapy.'" The word considering there is crucial because right now there is no legislation in place, and who knows if there ever will be. As you know, parliament is paroled right now. There is no such thing as Bill C8. The government is rethinking their whole strategy in the wake of the pandemic. And who knows if this is going to be a priority coming out of that? And then, you know, potential election, and who knows what the outcome of that might be and where this potentially would go. So the report points out that several municipalities across Canada have passed these bylaws, so clearly this type of, this type of bylaw is within our mandate. A municipal bylaw represents a lower threshold than criminal charges, so even if Bill C8 did move forward, the threshold is always a lot higher from a criminal case. And a bylaw, a local bylaw provides more immediate opportunity to shut this practice down, other than having to go the federal route. So in summary, on this point, we can't wait for the federal government to protect the people in our community. As for the legal challenges, point number three, the report identifies concerns, quite a few concerns about potential legal challenges. So let me say that, A, so far, there have been no legal challenges to any, any bylaw of this nature in Canada. B, many legal councils across Canada have reviewed this with their municipalities and instructed them that this is legally sound. And C, you know, if there were a challenge to come, it would most likely be targeted at a larger city like Edmonton or Calgary. But that point is moot because even in our own report down the bottom, it says that legal counsel has reviewed it and they're fine with the options presented. So before I bring forward any motions, I want to highlight my two recommendations and give folks a chance to weigh in. So my first one, and this option is actually not identified in the report, is that administration prepare a standalone prohibition bylaw that prohibits conversion therapy and comes with that $10,000 fine. So to be clear, this is not in the business license bylaw where it would be buried. A standalone message, I think, sends a stronger, sorry, standalone bylaw sends a stronger message to the community. And based on my many conversations with an elite academic in this area, Dr. Chris Wells, who has advised many municipalities on this, the Calgary, Calgary's comprehensive bylaw is a standard that we should follow. So from a work perspective, it's all been done. There's a really good standard that we could easily follow, adopt and bring back quickly in front of council. The second recommendation is identified as option six, that council, a council policy on opposition of conversion therapy. And essentially what that does would demonstrate the city's opposition to conversion therapy and support the LGBTQ2S community by restricting the use of city resources and funding to organizations that practice and promote conversion therapy. So in summary here, you know, we need to ask ourselves, what type of community do we want to have? Part of our job on council is to protect the safety of residents in Beaumont. We talk about wanting to be a safe, inclusive community. It's in all of our strategic plans. But we must be proactive on this and not be reactive if it just pops up. A standalone prohibition bylaw and a council policy sends a strong message that we are positive allies for the LGBTQ community. And it also shows our residents that you're welcome here and that we're going to protect you. Thanks, and I'll, I'll pause there and leave it. See if anyone else has any comments.
Thank you very much, Counselor Margot Swain. Open it up for comments to other members of council. All right, so I don't see anybody on the, on the, on the speaker's list, so I guess I'll weigh in a little bit here. First of all, I'd like to say that I don't believe in the practice of conversion therapy. And I don't want to get into debate about the harms of it. I think those are, those are well documented and well perceived. I'm still wondering, though, whether this is, this is in our lane as a municipality, and I know that you've made some strong arguments about it's being, we want to be a safe and inclusive community, and we want to do that. But this question in my mind is not, should we do it? It's, do we have the authority to do it? And so I wouldn't mind a little bit more information perhaps from admin, if they have, on what, what the bylaws look like, and are they, have they been, like, are they able to be put in place by us and enforced by us? Is this something that we should be dipping our toes into?
Thank you, Chair, through you two members of the committee. As I outlined in my report, I did send this through, through legal review. In my report, I had indicated that there have been a number of challenges that are starting to come through. And I have taken that exact quote from legal when I added it into my, my report. Council is able to pass a bylaw. When in drafting the bylaw, we would need to ensure that it still falls within the jurisdiction of what a council can do when passing it and making sure that it does not overlap into the jurisdiction, jurisdiction of any federal or provincial act. That, of course, would be done through legal when drafting it. Other municipalities went through the exact same legal process and have passed these bylaws and, and to date, as I mentioned, there have been a few legal things that have come forward. Legal at this point has not discussed with me on, on what those legal challenges have been. But those are something that will come forward, but he indicated that the way that they stand alone bylaws, as long as we're not entering into the jurisdiction, should be able to stand.
Okay, so then I go back to Counselor Ron Koff Swain. Calgary being the, the gold standard is not really in here. Can you give us a quick synopsis of what that looks like? And what we'd actually be trying for?
Yeah, so a couple of things, you know. Again, there isn't any federal legislation on this, so we can't review it against something that doesn't exist. But something that we could put into the bylaw and that I'd recommend is, if there ever was federal legislation that was passed, that, that we do a review of the bylaw to ensure that it meets and falls in line with that standard. With regards to the city of Calgary, the reason why it's a, why it's considered a kind of the standard is it's a lot clearer. It is a standalone bylaw. It, it's not one that's buried within, you know, some municipalities have gone to put it within their business licensing piece. But what the city of Calgary, by having their own separate bylaw, identifies that the practice of conversion therapy, including a $10,000 fine, it would be implemented for anyone advertising, offering those, those services. So that it's not a very complicated bylaw. And I think, you know, the motion that I'm going to be putting on the table, and what I want to be clear on tonight is, you know, you're not voting on the bylaw. You'll still get a chance to see the bylaw. I'm just asking that we direct administration to bring back a bylaw for Beaumont. And so you'll, you'll be able to have a look at that, and then I would, I would offer that, that any, any, I get the legal questions, but again, there haven't been any legal challenges that have been put forward on this. And when we see a bylaw in front of us, that'll give our legal department a better chance to actually review the legality of it, as opposed to a, right now, we're asking them on some options, right? We need to put something in front of them, a standalone bylaw that says, that outlines it, and then they can make their legal decision, and I think that would be the time to fairly ask our legal counsel what, whether, whether there is any potential legal consequences for that or not.
No, fair enough. So just so that I'm clear in my mind, the city council, I'm just reading the report, has, it's still a prohibition on, on businesses, but it's standalone instead of being in the business bylaw. So that, as far as my understanding is, yeah, we can regulate what businesses come into our community, so that's in our lane.
Yeah, we definitely, that doesn't get into any of the criminal code or anything like that. It's clearly, I mean, they passed the bylaw. It's well within the jurisdiction under the Municipal Government Act. It is, the, the beauty of the Calgary bylaw is that it's not, it's, it's a standalone. So when you go to their website and you see their bylaws, it's, it's right up there in front, and it sends a stronger message than our business license where we kind of, where it would be buried. So again, it's, it's very simple. It's, it's not, it's not a lot of work to do, so, yeah.
So seeing not a whole lot of people talking, I'm prepared to take a motion if you want to make one, and then perhaps we can versate debate on the motion.
Yeah, I'm happy. I just wondered if other folks had questions of administration. I'm happy to dive right into it, but if.
Yeah, go ahead. Make your motion. Well, do the first motion.
Okay, yeah, so the, the first motion is that, that council direct administration to bring back a standalone conversion therapy prohibition bylaw to council. And then I'll ask for a date, but I'll give administration a chance to, to provide some, some input on that date, so we'll put date in brackets there. Was that clear, Ms. Winter?
Thank you, Chair. I just want, through you two, committee member, Ms. Swain, is that we are in a committee of the whole. So any direction that will be coming out will be back to administration to prepare a bylaw to bring to council for first reading.
Yeah, make those amendments to the wording, but yes.
Yes, thank you.
I believe that was intended, anyway.
That's intent, yeah. Forgot what type of meeting we're in, but yeah, you know what I mean.
Okay, I see Counselor Stote. Open up the, Counselor Stote.
Thank you, worship. I wanted to ask if we knew if any of, through yourself to administration, I guess. Oh, this is not a council matter, council meeting, so I can be less formal. So my question is, do we know if any of the municipalities that have this bylaw have actually levied a fine? If it's ever, or if it's ever been challenged, I assume that it hasn't been challenged. Has a fine been levied from what you just said? So is there, are there any instances that we know of of a fine actually being levied?
Thank you, Chair, through you two, committee chair, through the committee chair to committee member Stote. When I reached out to other municipalities, they had not indicated that they've levied the fine.
So as far as we know, this, this, the bylaws have never been put to the actual test. Have never been effectively used.
Or at least, any sharing when I was doing my research, they did not include that on whether or not they had.
Okay, but they're all fairly recent. I don't think there's anything earlier than 2020, and this is, oh, 2019. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I believe St. Albert was first in 2019, and everybody else has gone from there, but I could be wrong.
Yeah, so if I could just weigh in, sorry, again, in my discussions with, with the lead academic on this, Dr. Chris Wells, he informed that, no, that there isn't, hasn't been any fines levied on this. Again, that's, that's from me through him to you, so you take that for what it's worth. But that's the information that I had, that no fine has been levied.
Okay. Further debate, Counselor Van Newkirk.
Yeah, you bet. Thank you. Through the committee chair to Counselor Monkoff Swain, I just pulled up the Calgary bylaw, and you're right, it does look fairly simple. And basically, it's taking the approach of, it says, being a bylaw of the city of Calgary to authorize council of city Calgary to prohibit business, and then it talks through about being a prohibited business bylaw and acknowledging the practice of conversion therapy as opposed by the Canadian Psychological Association on College of Urban Psychologists. I assume that's the right one. Yeah, and so the, the bylaw itself is, you know, five pages and fairly simple, and I think that putting something together like this that is a standalone document is a more forward and stronger way to, to put forward a position on an issue like this. So I think that's something I could support. Thank you.
Okay, fair enough. So just hearing the way council's going, I think, I think the Calgary bylaws will serve as the template and the model. Seeing any of this to be built, to be brought back. Ask the CAO, how long do you think this is going to take? Not that long?
Thank you very much, Mayor Stewart, rest of council. Yeah, as you've outlined, there, there's a number of templates out there, and it sounds like the Calgary is one, is, is one we can look at. We do have a very busy fall schedule as far as meetings are concerned, so the amount of work is not the indicator. It's a matter of when we can get back on an agenda. So I would like to suggest by the end of this year, November at the, at the earliest, October is jammed unless you want to bump some stuff.
Okay, so put a date on it of the, the end of 2020?
As you could appreciate, I got some thoughts around that. So not knowing exactly what, what's on the agenda and not wanting to play horse with, with, with an agenda, but you know, I hope that this is, this is something that we can get done pretty, pretty quickly and, and put on, put on an agenda. It's, obviously, we don't need to have any, it's, we don't need to have a statutory hearing or anything like that for this type of bylaw, so it's, it would be potentially, obviously, seeing our council goes one night, so I would like to see it in, in October, if possible. Recognizing that, that may cause things to bump, and, but I just, I don't want this to get further into the budget cycle where the whole focus is going to be on the budget, so that, that's my thoughts. Obviously, we'll go with, with councils, but I'd like to see it come back in October.
See you.
Yeah, it just, October 6th is when the budget cycle starts, so I just point that out. If council wants us to look at agendas and see what we can juggle to put this in, then that's the will of council, we'll do that.
Okay, so how about we leave it at this end of December, end of 2020, but as fast as possible? Again, saw it off, November. But if we can get it in October, because I, I've seen October's agendas there, I'm going to be coming back to council, ask for some leeway on some timings.
Yeah, without, without trying to be too dramatic on this, and, you know, I don't think we should be waiting on, on something like this. But again, I'll defer to other counselors. I think the most important thing is that we, we agreed here to bring this bylaw, standalone bylaw back, and I appreciate, it sounds like we've got some support for that. I would like it to be in October, but if the will of council is in November, then, you know, I can live with that.
Yeah, and the only comment I want to make, and you just ended your, your statement with that, is tell us what the will of council is. And I think we've done a pretty good job of being able to manage that and understand that priority, so council, tell us what you'd like, and we'll go from there.
Yes, I'll leave it open to others.
Just looking for some nods and heads. Stick your, your hand up if October's good for you. One, two, eight, October it is. That was a straw poll, it wasn't a vote.
Yeah.
I'm not sure everybody weighed in on that, that direction. I didn't see that, so.
I got four out of seven, so. But we can go, all those in favor of November? Yeah, so. We're just putting the data, bring the bylaw back to, for the end of October. Bearing in mind, well, we have large agendas coming. There's not a whole lot of workload to get this bylaw prepared, apparently. But we have large agendas coming in the month of October, budget kicks off. So it's, it's a function of council's time. Counselor Hendricks?
My question would be, what gets bumped from the agenda?
Well, I don't think we would be bumping things from the agenda because they're pretty important. We would be extending meetings.
Okay, so you'd extend a meeting?
Yeah, so instead of.
So administration's okay with extending a meeting and adding this to the agenda? If that's the case, then I'm in favor. If the administration is saying we got to bump something, then let's get it bumped and figure out what that is.
See you.
Yeah, what we typically do is look at our agendas, you know, the first meeting in October right now is unmanageable, so what we've done is look at staff and what, and things that can be moved. Plans that don't need to be approved right now, plans, bad example, things that don't need to be approved right now. If the direction is to add this to an agenda without removing anything, then that's what we'll do. And we'll get it done in that month. It'll be just a bit of a longer meeting.
All right, so we'll leave it as the end of October. Seeing no further requests to speak on the motion, all those in favor. Counselor Van Newkirk, there it goes. All right, so that carries unanimously. We'll see that bylaw back here the end of October. Counselor Margot Swain, you had a second motion? Sorry, Counselor Danlock?
Thank you, your worship. I think Counselor Barhart mentioned a moment ago, it seems to be a difficult hearing today. Could the internal microphone be helped turn up a little louder? That's possible, so we could hear each other a little more clearly, if that's possible. Or just, it just seems quieter than the previous meeting. I'm not sure why, perhaps. Thank you. That's better now.
See you. Counselor Margot Swain?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. And as I mentioned off the top, and I'll get the wording wrong here, apologies, Ms. Winter, about whether I'm directing administration or council. But the intent of this is for administration to bring back a council policy to council opposing the practice of conversion therapy at a later council meeting. That's, that's the motion. Is that clear enough? Okay, can one of us speak to that?
One sec. Ms. Winter, is it?
I'm, I'm just going to refer to Ms. Anderson as she's taking the minute, so I just want to be clear that she's clear on that direction.
Okay, that was the first motion. We're on the second motion in relation to option six.
Yeah, that's okay. So the, the motion would read that, that council direct administration to bring back a council policy on opposing, sorry, on opposition of conversion therapy in, by October 2020.
Yeah, apologize. The sound in here is really kind of, apparently, eh? We'll have to fight through it. That's why I stopped to make sure everybody had heard. All right, so moving forward, you can speak to it, and then we'll open it up for discussion.
Just to clarify, as, why? Just to clarify, as to why there are two motions and why we need a bylaw and a policy, so we talked about the bylaw prohibiting business, but the policy really talks about the city's use of, the use of city resources, and would would obviously restrict the use of city resources and funding to these organizations, to any organizations that practice or promote conversion therapy. So one is prohibiting the business side of things, and the other one is is ensuring that there are no city resources that go towards that. And I would share that the Strathcona County model, again, as per Dr. Chris Wells here, identified and done a lot of work on on this with them, is is quote unquote the the standard for whatever that's worth for administration, but would recommend looking at that. So again, while I recognize there is work, we're not developing anything from scratch. There, there are some good examples of this out there, and Strathcona County would be the would be the the gold standard here. I would also point out there, and in the report, it says that this option would provide no legal consequences on groups that practice conversion therapy within within the city of Beaumont, but that is, that is covered by the other one, so I'll leave it there. I just wanted to clarify the distinction between council policy and the prohibition bylaw. Thank you.
Discussion from other members of council, Counselor Barnhart, followed by Counselor Danlock.
Thank you, committee chair, and a question to the administration. I I agree with the intent of that motion. My question would be, is it too specific and is there not something already in our? I I'm thinking to the preamble to the community grant funding, if I'm not mistaken, we had something to the effect that any grant that was applied for and was approved had to be in keeping with city of Beaumont principles, values, et cetera. I I guess I'm, I'm a little reticent to have a policy as specific as that and not one that speaks more generally to the intense. I I am anticipating what could come after this one, and I I just don't want to see councils caught up in making a policy for every exclusion, rather have something more general that speaks to it. Again, I'm not opposed to having that as a a reason we wouldn't give a grant, but I think it could be included in in some of our other documents, but maybe not.
Counsel Danlock?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Let admin respond to that one. CEO? Sorry.
Yes, thank you, your worship, to Counselor Barhart. What I'm hearing is is a request for a specific policy to deal with this topic. I I don't know that the language in our grant policy would would stand up to a challenge, so in this case, I think being more specific versus less specific is probably a wise move on our side, knowing that others have done it and so far are standing the test of time. So from an men's perspective, I think we need to be specific on this one. It sounds like that's the wish of at least one council.
You're much follow up, Counselor Barhart?
Respectfully disagree, but it without having that policy, that that grant funding document in front of me, I can't speak to the actual words of it. But, you know, it seems to me that we'll have moral discussions potentially around other items, and I I can think of some that I know in my, in in previous lives that we've had discussions around pro-life and and anti-abortion, things like that. And I'm just a little concerned that this is going down that particular road, and if we have to have one for each particular issue, it's not that I disagree with that, but I think we can come up with a policy statement that talks to the in keeping with the bylaws and the decisions of council rather, rather, and principles, rather than having something that is so specific to that. But if I'm the only one that feels that way, so be it, but that's, that's just my, my concern.
CEO comment, followed by Counselor Danlock, followed by Counselor Monkoff Swain, followed by Counselor Van Newkirk.
Yes, thank you very much, your worship, through Counselor Barhart. We could certainly look at the language that's in the policy. We do have advertising language, which allows us the ability to make decisions based on exactly what you just said, and and that was developed through legal because of past incidences around the groups that you mentioned and others. So I'm comfortable we're covered from an advertising perspective, but I, but I think what I'm hearing is is something more and not in funding, resources may not be money, it may be staff and those types of things. So that's why I think the specific is better.
Counselor Danlock?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a question to my fellow councillor, Counselor Monkoff Swain, on his next, this current motion here. Using the city Calgary as a bylaw that is a standard, which I appreciate having that as a template to use going forward. I'm assuming based on the report, it's not mentioned that city of Calgary has a opposition to, opposition to conversion therapy governance policy where Strathcona County does. So with your experience with the city of Calgary bylaw, if they don't have a governance policy, why do you feel we need one here? I'm not saying we don't, just want to follow the logic through the second thing we want to have that Calgary doesn't have, which we think Calgary is is the the standard to be following. You can elaborate, please. Thank you.
Counselor Margaswain?
Sure, and maybe I'll quickly address Counselor Barhart's comment first, is recognizing that the the policy would, that grants policy. What we're trying to, we, what I'm trying to look at here is not just opposition to to grants, but it's use of city facilities, city resources, all that sort of stuff that isn't covered under that grants policy. So it's it's, it ensures that all all city resources and and thank you to CRO Schwartz for for elaborating on that. It is not just grants that we give out, it's making sure that if if any organization is is practicing this conversion therapy, that that they don't get access to to our resources in total. With regards to Council Danlock's question in the city of Calgary, so I mentioned that they were the standard in terms of the bylaw, absolutely. I wouldn't say they were the standard in terms of how they they handled conversion therapy, full stop. I I would think that if Beaumont put this policy in, that people would then look to Beaumont, and we would be the standard, because we are, we have a bylaw and we have a council policy. So I I would love to see the city of Calgary adopt the policy and also love to see Strathcona County adopt the bylaw, but moving forward, I think, you know, this, this would be a great signal to, not only for for our residents and the safety for them here, but showing leadership across the region that that we we took this aggressive and important stance, and we would be the leader in this field in Alberta for sure.
Thank you very much. Follow up, Counselor Danlock?
Yes, just clarifies your position. I do appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Counselor Van Newkirk?
Yeah, thank you. Through you, committee chair, to CEO Schwartz, I think what you said around resources is very important. And I'm wondering, should council choose to support the motion put forward, you know, would we be able to put a definition of resources into that policy to to make sure we clearly define those types of things that you referred to? I think that might be very helpful.
Yeah, that's a very good suggestion, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
All right, seeing no further requests to speak, we will call the question, all those in favor of adopting or having a council policy come back to council? And that carries unanimously. Thank you. Which brings us to item three B, municipal elections report. Ms. Winter?
Thank you, Chair. The purpose of this report is to provide the committee with information on a notice of motion that was presented at the August 25th, 2020 council meeting. In the notice of motion, it was asked that administration bring back information with regards to section 27 of the local authorities election act, when it comes to signatures, section 29 for deposits, and sec, and our zoning blueprint Beaumont land use bylaw. In accordance with the municipal government act, a municipal council may pass legislation in the form of municipal bylaws. With regards to signatures, currently Beaumont follows the legislation of having at least five voters eligible to vote in the general election for signatures. With regards to deposit, we currently do not have a Beaumont in place that requires any deposits to be accompanied with nominations. With regards to our zoning blueprint land use bylaw, we have, in our by, in our land use bylaw, we have provided the provincial guidelines within our bylaw. If the committee has an appetite to move forward to amend our land use bylaw, we would need to move forward with making those change, those suggested changes to the land use bylaw as well as advertising and having a public hearing. At this time, administration is looking for direction on how the committee wishes to proceed.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate the report. It spells out what our options are really quite succinctly. When I, when I first brought this notice of motion, and thank you, council for passing it, was to be able to provide council with the opportunity to discuss exercising its authorities under the local authorities election act in terms of the elections coming up. Now, coming forward in the next couple of months are are the election bylaws that will be defining how how the the election will take place in 2021. And so having this discussion now just facilitates the the ability to inform the drafting of those bylaws and then bring them back. And so I propose we take this in in three sections. We'll, we'll talk about signatures, deposits, and then signage separately. So starting out with signatures right now, the baseline is five, you got to get five. As you all know, in the last municipal election, we had 20 candidates. And I'm not saying 20 candidates is bad, but as our city grows, the question is, is should the bar for entry raised to be a little higher? City of Edmonton, they have, they require 100 signatures and 1,000 bucks, but we'll talk about deposits later. Other smaller cities don't have deposits but require increases in signatures. And so the question I put before council is, is do we wish to raise the bar a little bit to say 25 signatures or 100 signatures, or or the number can be discussed? To be be able to push people out of their comfort zone a little bit, because I know in my own family, like I can get five signatures just with members of my family, sitting here in the city. 25, I would have to push outside my comfort zone and actually go talk to people to get those signatures. Or my circle of friends, rather, now my comfort zone, I can go talk to people, that's no problem. So, and then that that's sort of going to raise the standard of, standard of being able to get in. And so I'll open it up, I'm not going to make a motion on this right now, because I, like, if council's happy with the status quo, I'm I'm just as happy to leave it with a status quo, too. So open it up for comments on this particular item for members of council. Counselor Danlock?
Thank you, your worship. The idea of signatures, having 20 candidates in the last election, I think, was was outstanding achievement for our community. I mean, 20 people wanting to stand up and and serve the community in some way or form, but that's elected official, that takes courage. It takes some initiative, and it should not be penalized in any way or form. So I'm, I'm not in favor of actually restricting many people as possible to become a candidate in an election, and if getting signatures is a problem for people, then that will automatically get them out of the, out of the program. So I'm in favor of leaving it at five signatures at the present time for becoming a candidate in next election. Thank you.
Okay. Thoughts from other members of council? Counselor Van Newkirk?
Yeah, you bet. Thank you. Thank you, Chair. I think it was a good idea to separate the signatures, deposits, and signage into three distinct sections. Personally, I haven't received any feedback on signatures one way or another, and hadn't thought about it a whole bunch until you put the notice of motion forward, and I respect the comments that committee member Danlock just made. Deposits, I haven't received much feedback there, but I think I'll put most of my comments into the signage section tonight. That's where, that's where I'll have some more discussion. So I don't feel strongly that on the issue of signatures that we need to make a change from five. Thank you.
Oh, fair enough. Like I say, it's just a, Counselor Margaswain?
Yeah, thank you, committee chair, and I appreciate you bringing this forward. I think it's a good discussion to have as a group prior to to getting in. I I too have stronger thoughts as we head our way down to signage, and I'll share that, but on signatures, aligned with Counselor Danlock there, that, you know, we we want to make it as open as possible for folks to be able to put their hand up and run. And I wouldn't be supportive of of changing that number myself.
Okay, Counselor Barhart?
Thank you, committee chair, and I'll add my voice to the, to my colleagues. I I think status quo is appropriate at this time. I think timing is important and something that perhaps the next council can look at at the beginning of their term rather than just before an election.
No, fair enough. And like I say, I'm, I'm good either way. I, I, we've now had four, five out of seven speak, and I'm okay with with the status quo, so unless the other two members of council wish to make a motion, I'm just not going to make a motion on on signatures, and we'll stick to status quo. Okay, which brings us to deposits, and I'm going to ask the same question of council. Deposits are also another way to to sort of raise it up and ensure candidates do have the funds to actually execute a campaign. I myself am not going to speak in favor of deposits. I, I was willing to raise signatures to to do that, but deposits, no, city Beaumont is a small place or a relative, a relatively small city. I'm not sure that we're at the point where we need to be putting deposits in. And so that's where I'm currently leaning, and so just open it up for comments from members of council. Counselor Danlock?
Thank you, your worship, and I agree, I'm very glad you brought this to the fore for for discussion as well, too. It goes hand in hand in my, in my thinking with the signatures, that the status quo is sufficient at the present time in Beaumont. Any restriction on anybody be able to become a candidate should be, should be removed, and I think a deposit may be detrimental to some people, and this perception could be detrimental, so I am, I'm happy with leaving the current status quo of no deposits, but thank you for bringing it to the committee for attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion for members of council? Or do we do a quick straw poll? Counselor Monkoff Swain?
Yeah, did, or just to to help you out here along, I, I, I'm with you. We don't have a bylaw requiring it now. I don't support bringing a new one in, so I'm good.
Okay. Quick hands, unless people want to speak, no deposits? No deposit, no deposit? Yes, no? Okay, looking at here. All right, so wanted to bring it up, give council the option to have the discussion if they so wanted, so no deposits, which brings us down to signage, which should be, which I'll be honest, I thought was going to be the far more interesting conversation. And I did receive a lot of feedback on this particular item right around right around the end of the last election about signs choking up laneways and boulevards and too many, and and so I think an interesting discussion today would be surrounding, placing some limits on where, on numbers and well, not necessarily where they can go, but limits on numbers that can go on public property would be where I would go with this, but I'll open it up to comments from members of council. Counselor Danlock, followed by Counselor Van Newkirk?
Thank you. I guess I'll kick off the conversation.
Sure.
And I do appreciate this being brought to council's attention as well, too. I think we can all appreciate comments we have received at the last election three years ago, where we all were successful and so the by-election for council and Newkirk, of course, my thoughts on this one, I'm fine with the information provided as to where they can be posted, numbers and signs, if so, and our size of signs, I mean, but I think we should consider perhaps implementing a limit of number of signs per candidate, especially when we have 20 candidates for council. If we have 25 or 30 candidates in the coming election, as we grow as a city, that could become a lot more signs, so I've heard the number 50 bounce around with some people I've talked to. Personally, I bought 75 signs in my election run three years ago. I would have 25 less if I run again in a year from now. I think 50s are reasonably good number to have as a place to start the conversation. You see how my fellow colleagues on council feel about that, but I'm, I'm fine with the information provided. I would suggest that maybe we bounce on the idea of maybe cap adjusted as council sees fit. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Counselor Van Newkirk. Thoughts?
Yeah, thank you. In the October election, I wasn't victorious. But what I heard in between then and the by-election was a lot of comments on signage to the point that during the the debate on, at, for the by-election, that was held at the Colonial Golf Club, actually spoke up and said, you know, should I be in a position to, I would like to have the conversation about signage, and here we are tonight, so. I would like to have the conversation about signage and here we are tonight. So I was thinking along the lines of counselor Danlock, but I was wanting to add to the conversation, perhaps we think about signs on private property and signs on public property as in private property giver. Public property, maybe X number of signs and talk about locations. I don't really have suggestions on numbers or locations, you know, counselor Danlock suggested fifty, you know, so maybe, maybe it's fifty max on public properties, but you know, or whatever council figures a number could be, but limited to what sections, you know, do we make a section of Beaumont where we can put signs up during election? Or is it this, that or the other thing? I, I also wanna comment that I think we need to be cautious on what we do here because let's not make it a huge burden on bylaw, right? And with through a complaint process and such, so not sure what the right answer is, but I do think that we should separate the idea of private property and public property as in if you hustle and get a thousand signs out on private property on people's front lawns, well, good on you. But if you don't and you're just wanna be able to put them on public property, then perhaps there's a limit. I'm interested to hear what others think. So, thank you.
Yeah, I agree with you, counselor. I think the discussion should be private versus public. And I, I'm, I have the same thing. If I can get a thousand signs onto people's lawns, then I should be able to put a thousand signs on people's lawns. But I do think we should center the conversation on a reasonable number to put on public property, so we don't choke the boulevards again. Counselor.
Thank you. Yes, good, good discussion. What, what I do wanna highlight here and, and thank you Ms. Winter for, for pointing it out is, you know, a lot of, a lot of the focus is on our own land use by law. But looking at the provincial one, I think it'd be important for when we get into the election to, to remind folks of some of the, the provincial guidelines. Uh, you know, the one I, I found multiple times about signs not being able to be within five hundred meters of a construction zone. That was just not a, a, and I think part of the reason is, is a lot of people are getting into this potentially for the first time and, and, and don't know that. Thankfully, someone pointed it out to me. So I, just on generally, I think, you know, when we, when we, we provide a good snapshot information, I just, we wanna make sure we talk about bylaw, but also the provincial guidelines. As it relates to this discussion, yeah, absolutely support private, go, go get it. On the public side of things, yeah, absolutely limit the, the number of signs there. It just, it made Fiftieth Street just look just gross for anyone coming in. You know, the point where you're looking at your own signs, you almost wanna take them down because it's, it's almost embarrassing. And so you know, the number fifty was thrown out, I don't know, sure. For me, you know, we're, we're just picking a number out of thin air. I, I, I did wanna jump in on top of Council of Newkirk's here that, you know, this is in place. What, what we don't wanna do is have administration come back and, and ask for, you know, X amount of staff to be able to go and monitor this, right? Like this is, we, we need to put the, the by, the, the bylaw or adjust the bylaw in place so that the number is clear and if, if folks end up sneaking around and putting fifty one or fifty two out, then you know, i- it is what it is. But I think this seems a clear message that we, we don't want to, to hit up and down signs, to split it up and down the, the, the main public places in, in Beaumont. So I, I'd be good with, with fifty. Yeah.
Great. Thanks very much. Counselor Danlock, follow up?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I was remiss in suggesting the fifty should be on public and thank you, my fellow councils for pointing that out. Private property is private property and that's, that's wide open. That's fine for your, your supporters. I do think it should be public. In response to Councilman Newkirk's comments or suggestion, pardon me, about perhaps a, a designated area for signage. I'm not sure I would go that far only because the thing I got last time election was not sign location, sign quantity was the big thing. And as we have twenty candidates this past election, which is great, we may have thirty next time. So thirty people at fifty signs each, that's a lot of signs. And I think fifty may be the magic number. And I think location was never the issue. It might be coming this next election if you have thirty candidates, but I think right now the location where signs were there was never an issue, my feedback I got, but number of signs clearly was. So I would I would be fine with the current location terms and being wide open to public property, but it's a limit of fifty. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Stowe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not, my concern with limiting to any specific number, whether it's fifty or, well, two concerns. First one is, how do we arrive at that number? I think it's completely arbitrary. That we just decide that fifty is the number or a hundred's the number or whatever it is. I'm not sure that there's any real statistical or, or demographic basis for doing, for choosing a number. But also a bigger concern is, is how do we actually enforce that? Somebody's got to go around and count them and keep doing it. Which seems to me like an unreasonable burden on whoever's charged with doing that. I would suggest that the issue with Fifty Street being cluttered with masses of ugly signs is, could be addressed maybe if we looked at not the, the actual number, but how close together all the signs are. I noticed during the last election that there were a lot of cases where candidates had put out three, four, five signs in close proximity. So what I'm gonna suggest is to deal with that is that maybe what we should do is say that any candidate's sign should not be within fifty yard, fifty yards of each other.
Yeah, no, it sounds like a, a reasonable thing. I would, I would counter that sometimes you want signs a little close because they're, people are driving by and they wanna read really quickly. If we didn't wanna put a number, maybe it's to limit the number along Fiftieth Street. I, I, and you're right, numbers are kinda arbitrary, fifty, one hundred, we're picking. But that's also the will of council, we get to pick. If we so choose. Yeah, you seem to have a reasonable argument. We'll see what the rest of council says. Counselor Barnhart.
Thank you, Chair. And I, I agree with Counselor Stout. I, for some reason thought there was a distance between, that was already in our bylaw, but obviously not. It makes sense to me to go that route because I think counting them is, would be somebody's job and I, or each candidate would be counting each other's signs and that could be an issue. Not, not really opposed to the number, but I, I prefer doing the enforcement of it by the, the distance between. But my question was going to be to Ms. Winter. Would this open up the land use bylaw, Ms. Winter? And would we have to have a public hearing then?
For you, Chair, to, any member, Barnhart, yes. So in making an amendment, the land use bylaw, we would have to advertise and we'd have to have a public hearing to move forward with any type of amendment to the land use by law.
Thank you for that. I, I think that's a consideration in terms of what we will hear from the public when we do that. So.
That may not be a bad idea.
You might wanna propose several options and see what happens.
Yeah. Question of Ms. Winter. If, if we wanna open up just this one little section, not the whole land use by law, that would, we can do that, right?
Thank you, committee. Yes, actually, you would. Opening up this section of the bylaw only.
Okay. Counselor Van Newkirk, followed by counselors Danlock and Monkaugh Spain.
Yeah, thank you. Committee Chair, I think we got a decent discussion going here. Should I decide to run again, catch you at twelve oh one AM on nomination day, jock in for position on Fiftieth Ave, where to put my signs? I don't think that's the health, I don't think that's the intent of what we're trying to do tonight, or it wasn't my intent. You know, I think to respond to a couple of comments, you know, most of, well, our, our bylaws are complaint based. So we wouldn't actually be charging someone with going out to count signs. You know, if someone went out there and counted signs and then complained to bylaw, then bylaw jumps in the vehicle and, and then they go and, they go and check. You know, so I think that, you know, that process is gonna be what it's gonna be, but you know, in the spirit of keeping it simple, I wonder, I wonder if we don't just do the private, public, private, public fifty, right? Like if that, you know, if that tightened things up somewhat and simplified things down, that, you know, that might be where we, where I suggest that we maybe land, land tonight. Interested to hear if anyone else has any other ideas. Thank you.
Counselor Danlock.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I respectfully, I disagree with Counselor Stout's suggestion only because I think it may be difficult to enforce in terms of having signs a certain distance apart or a certain number of signs or a certain part of the section. The current situation is not really, as I said earlier, a question of location and depth. If I have my sign beside Counselor Stout's sign, I'm, I'm totally fine with that. We did actually a couple of signs right beside each other. Worked out fine, I thought. Keep it simple. I said they have a number of signs. The current location situation is not an issue, I don't believe at this present time. So I don't wanna get it more complicated than it needs to be in terms of how we're going to enforce the distancing and so on. I don't think it's really necessary. But I do think that sign restriction would be good. And as far, as far as enforcement goes, could we not as part of the candidate's nomination form, have them simply say that part of the nomination is that they agree that they will have no more than fifty signs? If that's something we fall upon to be on public property and they sign that, then I think they'll be honor bound by that. And I think they'll be respectful of that, future candidates. And I think there won't be fifty one or fifty two to worry about any bylaw enforcement because they know fifty is a number, if that's the number we agree upon. They'll sign that form. I think they'll, they'll abide by it and think we'll be, we'll be fine. Thank you very much.
And honestly, I think peer pressure will do it for you. The last, the last election, some candidates had fifty between five, ten and the Ken nickel. So, or it seemed like they had fifty between five, ten and the Ken nickel. So I think if you put an art number on it saying fifty, if people put out fifty two or fifty five, nobody's gonna go out there and count them. If you spread them out through the city and that's the point. CAO, you wanted to wane on this a little bit?
Yeah, the risk, sorry, I, I realized that the two of you, I just wanted to throw out an alternative. I'm looking at our neighbors to the, to the north and they've got what they call terms and conditions for the placement of freestanding election signs on city road right away. And what they talk about is the same size signage, point six meters wide, one meter high, mounted on a frame, blah, blah, blah. They also say that signs shall be placed with a minimum distance, space distance of twenty meters between the same candidate's sign. They talk about no sign shall be placed within thirty meters of a signalized highway intersection, fifteen meters of non-signalized, three meters of curb face and, and a number of other requirements. So the approach they've taken is, is not m- m- maximum number of signs, but distance between and distance from certain, certain roadways, markings. Thank you.
Might also be a way to go. Counselor.
Yeah, thanks. So off the top, I think we need to make this as simple as possible for people to understand. And, and if you go the twenty meter route or the fifty feet route, you're still gonna have folks who can have five hundred signs across the municipality and that's not what we're trying to get to. So you know, I, I would be in favor of, of limiting it to fifty signs on public property. And, and just trying to keep it as simple as possible. It, it's already stressful enough to, to have to come in and, and figure out what, what the hell you're doing when you put your name up to run for election. Trying to figure out and, and get a measuring tape out to see where you're gonna put your signs, just adds additional complexity. So I think it's pretty straightforward. I know as a candidate, I got fifty signs that are gonna go out on public property, straightforward.
Counselor Hendricks.
Your worship, thank you. Hearing the issue of the signage along Fiftieth Street has been unsightly. Perhaps we just state that there will be no signage along Fiftieth Street. If we're limited to fifty signs, if you just take the community boundary and said, okay, well then, that would potentially give me ten around each leg of the community. And, and, and a scattering of a few in the middle. That's all you've got left. So get rid of the Fiftieth Street parcel, get rid of those signage issues. And then all, I think your look, your community look would, would in improve dramatically because that's generally where the problem rests, which is driving in and out of the community. So, so fifty signs is pretty limited, given that we're a little better than two miles square here and twenty one quarters added to. You're gonna be pretty sparse. So I would say then it would help by just getting rid of Fiftieth Street as an opportunity for signage.
Interesting thought. Thoughts on Counselor Hendricks's comments? Okay, I'm not seeing too many requests to speak, Ms. Winter. Thank you, Counselor Danlock.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to make one comment with regards limiting signs. If we do receive a complaint, municipal enforcement would have to go out and count those signs. I know myself and Ms. Darje received a lot of complaints with regards to placement of signs and we were out there with, with measuring tapes and, and whatnot previously. So any complaints that would come in would have to go through some type of enforcement.
Thank you. Quick question for you and you might not know the answer to this question. Because they're opening up nominations, Jan one, previously you couldn't, couldn't put a sign out till nominations dropped. Are they changing any of that particular legislation or is it still thirty days before the election date for signage? I know our bylaw says thirty days, no more than thirty days, but what's the province doing?
Thank you, Chair. So with regards to the signs, there, there's no, there's no actual act where those signs fall within. They're only provincial guidelines when it comes to election signs for whether it be provincial or municipal. And nothing has changed within those guidelines and it's still stating those, those dates. So I, I am reviewing it, making sure that whether or not those are gonna change with the nomination and to date, I have not seen any changes for that. It's still within the thirty days.
Okay, so it's still within thirty days of an election that you can put signs out in the city of Beaumont. So from an enforcement perspective, if we did get a lot of complaints, yes, it'd be a lot of work for our people, but it's a relatively limited timeframe as well. Counselor Stowe.
Thank you, Chip, Mr. Chair. Um, just a question through you to admin to Ms. Winter. If the object, the exercise is to keep this simple, then, then it's to make this as simple as possible, then I'd suggest that we want to make enforcement as simple as possible. So my question is, which is more onerous is, is counting every sign in town? More time consuming and more difficult for a particular candidate? Or is measuring the distance between them? Which I would imagine would be confined to a small, to one or a very small number of sites if a complaint was received.
I, um, thank you through you to committee member Stout. I, I don't think I can answer that question fairly with regards to having a municipal enforcement officer going out and, and counting signs. I wouldn't want to speak to what would be easier for them as it would be them who are responding to the complaint and not myself. So.
Okay, very well. Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot there. I understand that you might not be able to answer that properly.
The CEO had his hand up too. He may wanna weigh in on this question.
Yeah, and, and with respect to Ms. Winter's response, yeah, it, it's not gonna be completely be able to determine what that's gonna look like. What I fear is, as, as she said earlier, is once we have a complaint, we need to send somebody out. So whether it's to measure between signs or whether it's to count signs, we're now gonna do that. I know the comment, the mayor just said, well, it's only for thirty days. Well, I would argue that the sign problem is only for thirty days and that every municipality in this province is dealing with the same thing. I'm not certain that there is a solution here. This is a, an enforcement nightmare, quite frankly. This is gonna take a lot of resources. All it takes is one person to be unhappy with another candidate and phone in or enter on our service request tracker and so and so's got too many signs. And guess what? Now we're going out to count signs. And the next day so and so says, well, somebody else's signs are too close. Now we're going out to measure signs. You know, is, is that a can we wanna open? That's, that's what I would offer.
All up, Counselor Stowe.
Uh, yeah, I'd suggest that, that, that might be the reason why Edmonton chooses to do a, to do a, a minimum distance requirement rather than a, a maximum number of signs. Because it's, it's gonna be easier to enforce, particularly somewhere the size of Edmonton. And I therefore favor that approach. I think that's much easier to administer and enforce. And aside from the issue of, of, we then have to arrive as, as Counselor Hendricks has suggested with, with or what's the number gonna be? It's fifty signs is gonna be fairly sparse. For, anyway.
Don't forget, it's, well, we could go for a hundred, but don't forget this is public property. You can put a thousand on public law.
I understand that, but nevertheless, I would, I personally would favor having a, no closer than twenty meters or whatever the standard is in Edmonton. twenty meters or whatever the standard is in Edmonton. That would also add the benefit of being consistent as well.
Fair enough. Councillor Magath Swain?
Yeah, three points. Respectfully, whether it's twenty meters or it's number of signs, either and sorry to sign you up, but either Ms. Winter and team is gonna be out there driving around counting signs or her and a team are gonna be out there walking paces between signs, right, with a, with a measuring tape. So either way, it's, it's onerous. Second point I wanna make is, is this something we wanna do? You know, if you pull it all the way back, the community clearly, to, to a person, said that there are way too many signs. And so I think while it adds significant additional work for administration, I personally think that this is something that we should do for the, for the betterment of our city during that thirty days. And so I respectfully, I'm sorry, administration, it's gonna be a lot of work, and I get that, but this is something that I think the city residents have asked for, and, and we just need to execute it. The third thing I just wanted to, to mention is that, you know, we're not making decisions here tonight. I know we're trying to give administration direction on what to bring, but maybe to wrap this up, they bring back a couple of options and, and they go back and speak to municipal enforcement and get their thoughts, bring back a recommendation. And then when we're in front of a council meeting or in front of the, the actual council meeting to, to debate the, when we open up the bylaw, then we could dive into this further. It seems like we're going a bit round and round here.
And as well, we'll have, as part of this process, will be a public hearing, so we'll get a chance to hear from the public on this as well.
Indeed.
And we can make adjustments later then too. Councillor Barnhart, followed by councillor Van Newkirk, followed by councillor Hendricks.
Thank you, Chair. And just one more question to the administration. If I'm not mistaken, when there's an enforcement or complaint and then an enforcement with signs, I think they've taken them down if there was an infraction. Is that correct, Ms. Winter?
Thank you, Chair. Through you, through committee member Barnhart, that is correct. They have been taken down.
Which I, I guess, just to the point of the ease of, a slightly easier way potentially of enforcing it might be to, you called out a sign is too close to another. Not sure which one you take down. You might have to take down both of them. As I think about that. But I, I, I do think that would be the way to be, it would be less onerous. But I'll defer to the people that are doing it to tell us that. And I agree with councillor Monka Swain that when it comes back, we can delve into the the weeds if we need to, but at this point, I'd like to hear what the citizens prefer.
Because, because what we're proposing is not a, a distance between mine and your sign. It's a distance between yours and your signs. So I can put mine right next to you, but you can't put one, two of your signs within X number of meters.
Okay, so then you could take one down.
Right, so, yeah, you could easily. Councillor Van Newkirk?
Yeah, good discussion again. What's I thinking on the fly tonight? That's for sure. And I guess that's what committee of the whole's for. Driving around in a, I, I think that the option that I would prefer right now would be the limited number on public property and number to be determined, fifty, seventy-five, a hundred. You know, you know, fifty might be where we should just land for now and go from there. But the reason I say that is because driving around in a vehicle and counting is less onerous than driving up, jumping out, parking, putting your flashers on, getting a tape measure, going out with two people, holding one end of the tape measure, holding the other end of the tape measure, walking up the street, go back, move your vehicle forward, or start hiking up and down the roads and stuff. So I think that, you know, any, anytime you're measuring distances, you gotta jump out of the vehicle. That's more onerous than driving by and counting. And I would be surprised if we heard a recommendation different than that. So anyways, I think one of the options I would like to see come back would be, you know, suggesting a limited number of signs. Suggest fifty. Maybe we could suggest seventy-five. I, I, I don't know what the rate number is. Like councillor Stout said, we're arbitrarily picking a number tonight, right? So, but limited number on public property, hustle and get them on private property. So that's kinda where my head's at after this part of the discussion. Thank you.
Councillor Hendricks, then I'm prepared to make a motion.
Yeah, thank you. I, back to Fiftieth Street, and I would suggest that if, if you're driving to a, a number of fifty in terms of maximum signage, then by taking Fiftieth Street out of the equation, I think you'll get your intended consequences in terms of signage and, and the clutter and the issues that go with it. Because if you don't and you get fifty, what, what are you gonna do? You're gonna say, well, Fiftieth Street is the key corridor, and you're really gonna load it up. And you'll stay out of all the other areas. Then you can have a bigger mess. So just a thought, and I look forward to what the administration can bring back to us at some point. So thank you.
Okay, sorry, I'm thinking about one for a second. Because if that is truly what we're trying to avoid is, is Fiftieth Street, which is in everybody's mind. There were a couple of others, Fiftieth being one. Maybe it's not limit. I'll get to you, Ms. Winter. Maybe it's not limit. Maybe it's not limit the total number. Maybe it's limit the number on those particular avenues. Ms. Winter?
Thank you, Chair. I'm just trying to be clear that you're wanting administration to bring back options outside of the bylaw. And within those options, you're wanting us to bring back a limitation of signs in public versus private?
Well, the, yeah, the motion that I, that I was about to put on the table was to limit the number of signs on public property to less than fifty, to fifty, not less than fifty, to fifty, with unlimited, unlimited number of signs on private property. So if you can find private property to put it on, that's up to you. But on city-owned property and laneways and things like that, was fifty. And I think there, yeah, some discussion about some options surrounding that, coming back as we draft the bylaw would be not too bad. Is that clear?
Sorry, Chair, so you're asking us to bring these options outside of the bylaw and then bring the bylaw back for amendment after councils had the discussion?
Yes, please. Hang on.
I am going to, actually, if it's okay, Chair, I'm going to bring in Ms. Raymond with regards to this, as this would fall under her area, and she would be doing the research. So if I could bring her in to make comment on that, that would be appreciated.
I just wanna make a suggestion for, for a motion, and I'll refer to Ms. Raymond, is that perhaps council directs administration to bring back options to reduce the problem of too many signs on public property. Could be that simple. Ms. Raymond?
There is your motion. Ms. Raymond?
Thank you, committee chair. I'm in agreeance with what CEO Schwartz just said. That if we could have that direction then to bring back options to limit the number of signs, we can do that appropriate research and bring it back options for you to choose from, recognizing that this bylaw needs to be in place for Gen One.
Thank you very much, CEO. Great idea. Taking into account the discussion that was had. I will make that motion. Discussion on the motion, councillor Van Newkirk.
Yeah, thank you. And I think the, like, that's, I think that's a good place to be. Thank you for that suggestion. You know, that'll also allow you to consider what amendments may or may not be required in the land you use by law or consider any other subsequent changes that may need to happen, and the timelines associated with those as the options come forward. So I think that's a good, a good place. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion? Seeing no more requests to speak. All those in favor? That carries unanimously. Which brings us to powering right through, because we do have another meeting at seven. Brings us to closed session. Can I get a member of council to move us into closed session? Councillor Stout?
Thank you. I move that we move into closed session.
Thank you very much. All those in favor? That carries unanimously. We're now in closed session.
Thank you very much. So to all those that are joining us as we come out of closed session, we do have one item of business arising from the, the closed session, item four A. I'd like to make the motion that the committee of the whole received the city of Edmonton, city of Beaumont intermunicipal collaboration framework as presented, and that the committee of the whole recommend that the city of Edmonton, city of Beaumont intermunicipal collaboration fram, collaborative framework be forwarded to the October thirteenth, twenty twenty regular council meeting for council approval. Discussion on the motion?
Seeing none? All in favor? Councillor Danlock, the button didn't go. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Which brings us to item five, councillor inquiries. Sir Member of council wishing to ask a question of him in this evening. Councillor Van Newkirk?
Yeah, thank you. The series of three questions through, through you, Chair, to the CAO or administration surrounding noise from the ice plant at the, at the BSRC. Can I just work my way through the three questions?
Chair, go ahead.
Just wondering if administration can explain to council what issues have been brought forward by neighboring residents as the BRC has brought online. These are stemming from a call I received on the, on the weekend from a concerned citizen located directly east of the, the new facility. Thank you.
CEO?
Yes, thank you, councillor Van Newkirk. We have received one official complaint, for lack of a better way to describe it, regarding the noise coming from the cooling tower. We've been communicating with this resident on a regular basis, including today. And we're exploring a, a couple of solutions at this point in time. We're just waiting to finalize costing.
My back one?
Yes, sir. I don't know what happened at all.
Sorry, I forgot that, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and just around those potential solutions, then, there, you know, when those solutions are brought forward or whatever, I'm assuming you'll, you know, be able to speak with the resident about that and give them an update on those solutions.
Yeah, that's exactly what we're doing. We're trying to find out what the, first of all, is there a solution? You know, and I'll be perfectly frank, there's, there's probably gonna be a, a tough way to satisfy this complaint. These pieces of equipment operate in, in neighborhoods all the time. There are some ways to dampen the noise, and that's what we're looking at right now. Varying from anywhere from a five thousand dollar fix to a thirty thousand dollar fix. We get into those types of things, that's gotta come back to council most definitely, but we will be, continue to communicate with the resident.
Yeah, thank you. And final, final question, Chair. Just wondering if administration can detail the communications that have occurred with the residents located east of the BSRC since construction began? You know, high-level letters, communications, contractor, city, those types of things. Are you able to comment on that?
Certainly, from the beginning, if council recalls, we had passed this along a couple of times. We have had to vary our noise bylaw for, for work to continue into the silent hours and through the weekend. And in each case, we sent letters to each one of the residents. If anybody had called in to inquire or any direct questions, and we didn't get a lot, then of course they were responded to as well. But as far as the letters, they, they went out several times when we extended the bylaw.
Okay, no, that's good. Yeah, so there was some constant communication then of being sent to the residents, I guess, is what I'm hearing?
Yeah, absolutely. And, and I think the residents for the, have been extremely accommodating. It couldn't have been a happy twenty months, you know, from all the noise and dust and everything else. But I think it's done, gone remarkably well, and quite frankly, thank the, the neighbors immediately adjacent to the construction site for their patience.
Awesome. Thank you for the update. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Councillor Magath Swain?
Yeah, thank you. I'm not sure if this is an inquiry, an emerging issue, but I'll, I'll go here. So I just wanted to acknowledge the, the, obviously, the, the new rec center being, being up and running there. And really just wanted to have a shout out to administration for putting up the, that really important plaque, the treaty recognition and acknowledgement of the, of the Métis homeland here in, in Beaumont. So I, I was wondering if council administration would entertain a discussion around a traditional blessing as part of the opening ceremonies. And the reason why I bring it up now is having some subsequent conversations with, with some, some leadership in, in here and figured that while I'm there, could, could potentially throw a bug in someone's ear. Fully recognize that a formal invite would, would come from the mayor. But I, I wanted to check in with council before, before saying anything. A traditional blessing is, is, is a pretty important and spiritual opportunity for, for the city. I think it'll be a good idea, but looking for guidance from administration or any concerns from council.
Speaking for myself, I think it's a great, a great idea. It helps us build those bridges. I don't know what a grand opening looks like in the COVID-nineteen world, but when we got it forward, yeah, it was all, would, should always be our intention to involve the indigenous nations within our surrounding area, and I would go for it. So open it up to brief comments from members of council and administration, should you wish to. Councillor Barnhart?
But I wonder if we ought to look at some multi-denominational invites, so that it's not only from the Aboriginal indigenous perspective, but perhaps there's other members of the community that would be welcome?
I don't think this particular initiative would preclude that. But if we could.
I think inclusivity requires us to not just do one, but to invite, and, and all we can do is invite. If they choose to come, they choose to come.
Councillor Danlock?
Thank you, worship. That was my exact point. Councillor Hart made was that there are, I believe, the priests and pastors, the various denominations get together themselves as a group and talk about issues that their churches are facing. I'm sure one of them would like to come and be representative of the community denominations within our community besides the First Nations people. So I look forward to that, having both of them there.
Yeah, like I say, I don't think this precludes anything else from going on on that day. Councillor Magath Swain?
Yeah, just, just to reiterate your point, yeah, it's, and this doesn't have to be part of a, a grand opening. I don't know if we need to wait for that. And, but yeah, certainly wouldn't preclude anyone else from, from participating. Yeah, so it sounds like, again, it, all I'm looking for is just general agreement to, to throw a bug in, in a few folks here and see if they're interested, so that when, when they get a letter, it's not out of the blue for them, so.
I think that's fine.
Okay, I've, I've heard. I got what I need, so thank you for entertaining that.
All right, there are no, no more requests to speak, so no more council inquiries. We have zero information items, no emerging issues, which gives us exactly three minutes to have a break before the next meeting starts. So I will declare the city of Beaumont Committee of the Whole meeting of September fifteenth adjourned, and we will reconvene in, call it ten minutes. At this time, I'd like to call the special council meeting of Tuesday, September fifteenth, twenty twenty, to order. As always, I'd like to acknowledge that we are pleased to be here today on the traditional territory of Treaty Six. We acknowledge all those who share a deep connection with this land. The city of Beaumont respects the histories, languages, and cultures of all of Canada's first peoples, whether they be of First Nation, Métis, or Inuit descent, and appreciates that their presence continues to enrich Canada's vibrant communities. We are all treaty people. Tonight, we have one item on the agenda in closed session, a development opportunity. Like to ask if there's a member of council willing to move the agenda. Councillor Hendricks?
I'm wondering if I should be declaring community interest at this time or after the adoption of the agenda?
Six, one half of those, the other.
Okay, so I'd like to do that at this time. So you worship under section one seventy-two of the municipal government act, we should declare a community interest on this matter. My community interest is embedded within the relationship my company, Hendricks Construction Limited, has with a development company actively involved in the central gallery.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. We'll note that for the minutes.
So I'll excuse myself?
Yes, please. Thank you. Have a good night. All right, is there a member of council willing to move the agenda? Councillor Van Newkirk? Thank you. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none? All in favor? That carries unanimously. Can I get a moment? Member of council to move us into closed session? Councillor Stout?
I move that we go to closed session.
Thank you. Discussion on the motion? Seeing none? All in favor? That carries unanimously. All right, so now, thank you to all those that are still watching, coming out of, watching us come out of closed session. We do have one piece of business arising from the closed session. I'd like to move that council direct administration to proceed with the development opportunity and finalize the agreement with the terms and conditions as discussed in the closed session. Discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none? All those in favor? That carries unanimously, which brings us to the end of the meeting. Once again, I'll That carries unanimously, uh which brings us to the end of the meeting. Once again, I'd like to thank council and administration. We had some really good conversations tonight between this between this special meeting and the committee, a regular committee of the whole meeting. Uh lots of great debate and uh look forward to continuing to move this municipality forward with you, and we'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.